Good evening, welcome to our regular meeting for Tuesday, June twenty fifth. And I'm opening the meeting at six oh four P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Is everybody seeing the warrants?
Yep, I make a motion that we approve warrants. W R twenty four dash twenty six second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Everyone has had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
For February fifth, February twentieth, and March fourth. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I move that we approve the minutes for February fifth, February twentieth, March fourth of two thousand and twenty four. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public session, is there anybody here for public session? Nobody tonight, okay? Next on the agenda is Philip Wood from Verizon. He's coming on to us via Zoom. Mister Wood, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me okay this this evening?
Yes, I can hear you just fine, thank you so much for coming this evening to us. And you have some concerns that you can explain to us for fiber?
Actually, it's not a concern, it's a request of the community. So, the state of Massachusetts Broadband Institute is conducting a grant program. The grant program is designed to provide support to providers such as Verizon that are interested in providing broadband capable service to locations that are considered to be unserved or underserved in the state of Massachusetts by community, so in Ocam, there is a number of addresses that the FCC has identified that are fall into this category, and that category is defined by speed levels of less than a hundred megabits per second. So Verizon is interested in pursuing a grant from the state to provide service to the the community. In that process, and I shared the the link of the grant requirements, we are required by the state to get a letter of support from a community if we're going to include that community in our request. So without a letter of support, we can't consider providing that level of service to the community. By providing a a letter of support, there's nothing binding, if you will, on the community for signing, if you will, or providing that notification. I provided a template in the note that I sent last week to the town. But I'm simply looking for a letter of support so that we can consider providing that as part of our grant request to the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
I read through the the letter, we're just basically filling the blanks.
I have them both from here.
Okay. Can you give us any more of as to what parts of the town, or the whole town, or?
So.
I would think the whole town would fall in the category of what you're talking about.
Well, so the FCC is the has defined the address locations that are considered to be under or unserved. I don't have the FCC map in front of me to tell you whether the town has, you know, six or six hundred addresses, but the way the grant is structured in the state is that those addresses would be part of a bid, if you will, where we would identify the locations based on the FCC's broadband map. And while the grant would be able, would be, would provide funding that would enable us to provide service to those locations, we would also, Verizon would be building fiber, so along the path of the fiber, we would be able to provide service to anybody along that path, so essentially it could mean many parts of the community depending on where those unserved locations are. But the intent would be to provide service to the unserved and underserved locations identified by the FCC, and in the process provide an available alternative for those along the path, if you will, of the the construction.
And that would be irrespective of spectrum charter?
Absolutely, irrespective, in fact, the way to look at this is it would provide a competitive alternative to the existing services that residents and businesses may already have.
Good. Yeah, very good. Now, does the the existing grant play into this totally separate, right?
Totally separate because it's only these buildings.
Right, right.
Does he include doing our buildings, our municipal buildings as well?
So we would provide, so I I don't, again, I can't speak to the mapping, if you will, until we get into that part of our engineering process, but to the extent that we're providing fiber, if you will, past, you know, town hall, if you will, there would be nothing that would preclude you from asking Verizon to give you a bid for services for town hall. I mean, you'd be just like any other customer, if you will, that was on the path of the fiber, the fiber line.
Yeah, I mean, we originally had fiber optics to the telephone building thirty years ago, and that was an in-house thing with Verizon, didn't go out from there. So that's where it would go from, most likely.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the engineering of the the town and specific to, again, where the FCC has identified those locations, but to the extent that it's on that path, I think it's a a fair proposition that, you know, we would be able to serve any clients or customers along that path, including the town, obviously, to your to your.
But I mean, that would be your focal point, would be the telephone building in town and branch out from there.
I think, you know, I think that's a fair assumption that, so the telephone building you're referencing is probably what we call the central office, so there's probably a central office hub, if you will, that serves the town, and we'd be hooking back into the central office.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All you need is a letter of support.
Yeah, so the letter of support is and and a prerequisite, a requirement for us to consider putting Oakham into our application with the state. So we are under an extremely tight timeline based on the the rules, we didn't write the rules, obviously, so that application is due the second, July second, so we are literally working feverishly to put together. The application process is is huge, frankly, I think the the our, the request for proposals ninety something pages, and we've got many communities that we're working on as part of this project, so we we need the letter of support probably in the next twenty four hours. Based on the conversation I had Friday with your team, I think she's got it prepared and it's ready for your action if you decide to move forward, which I I clearly hope you do, that's why I'm here. So and I'm happy to answer any other questions too, by the way.
So that's something that we can email back?
Yes.
U S mail?
Uh, yeah, please actually email back to me, you can just scan it, and I believe you have my email address, but I'm happy to send you an individual note if you'd like.
That we got it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
One L and Philip, but if you had a reply to the email that I sent previously, then we should be okay.
Okay, okay. Well.
And so that, the just one other thing that I would, I would say is that even, so this is phase two of the Massachusetts program, so if we don't get into phase two, if we have engineering or other challenges that prevent us from getting to that point on phase two, there is another process called the BEAD program, B E A D, it's a federal program that will probably be activated, I'll say somewhere around the fourth quarter, I don't have specific dates until the federal program gets solidified, but so if the phase two process of the Massachusetts Grant Program doesn't work out, we will probably be looking at the next part of this process, which would be BEAD, which will begin sometime in the fourth quarter.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, other than probably make a motion to I move that we take that that letter format send it in. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, I I certainly appreciate your willingness to entertain my request, especially on short notice and allow me the opportunity to meet with you, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, we need your questions. Yeah. Okay. Twenty four hours.
So does Marybell have that letter?
I have no idea, but we'll find out.
Like, I, yeah, I guess we will.
Otherwise, I can write one up.
Well, it's uh, it's just filling the blanks out of Ocam. When I read through it, it's just basically, you just keep putting town, Ocam.
If he sent a few emails, please.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you. Interim Town Clerk Discussion with Christine Marderosian, possible vote. Christine?
Um, I'm just here to be nice, the, I went in, Marybell called me a couple weeks ago asking a question that the assistant didn't know, and of course now Edna's not there. I walked into the office and I had a panic attack. I spent twenty three and a half years getting that like a well-oiled machine. It broke my heart, to be honest with you, and I think it's maybe, I don't know whose fault, I made that job look very easy. And it it it's not easy at all, I'm just here, I don't want to own anything, I'm willing to step up and try to help the assistant. I, when I was in there trying just to get invited, this poor woman waited three weeks for her husband's death certificate. That's unacceptable, when you have a loved one that has passed, you need that for all sorts of reasons, and, you know, it took me a while, I figured out how to get in there, couldn't get in under the state, don't have any idea what's going on, to try to help Karen, you know, to move on, so she doesn't have a clue, I'm not quite frank, how to go from here, we do need a town clerk sooner than later, but I'm willing to help out her to see if we can start getting things back in order, I mean, there was just certain things that I I did write down, I don't know what happened to them, of certain procedures, but just little things that needed, our town courts, you know, no one knew, and I wrote it down somewhere where that went, I don't know, because my office was very, you know, I have OCD, so I had everything together. You know, those, nobody knew that those books had to go one to the rest of the public library, one to Boston library, I mean, that that's our history, that's, so, you know, I'm just willing to say, okay, I'll step up, try to give you what I can for hours to help out. I, but I don't know where to go, you know, I said to Karen, did you scan these into the computer, did you do this? She hasn't gone on to the state computer since I know, since Edna left. There is so much on there that needs to be checked daily, and one is, you know, voter registrations, I I mean, it's gonna be a mess. I don't know about emails, I know there was seventeen missed calls as of almost two weeks ago on the the telephone, I mean, like someone walking in, it, I I don't know how they're gonna do it, I know I walked into a mess, and Ellie did a great job, she just did it internally too, you know, inter, because that the town clerk prior had left. And I was doing census in May, you know, so I I get it, but this is just like, at least I had help getting into the computer and the phone system and and things like that, and I'm I'm just not, I, it's a mess. I don't know, and unfortunately is away, so we can't even call to ask her, and in, I don't know where to go with the state, I'm not sure anymore, because things have changed too. If where I was in the system, if they would temporarily put me back in, but I don't know if they're gonna want to keep going, like each time we switch through a person to to keep changing it, or just say, look, you have one passcode, you two people, you know, assistant and regular clerk work together. But to my understanding, when Edna left, she did leave the codes, I think, for the state computer, but Karen didn't feel comfortable going on, so I get that, but you also have to continue on and and I don't think a lot is getting done, I don't, I don't even know, like I said, I I don't know what's on those, like who was leaving messages, what she was getting, like when I walked in there, she was just doing the report for the town meeting, but other than that, I think she just, she's lost, in all fairness, because she hasn't been trained and she hasn't been in there for a long time, but I'm just saying, I'm willing to give what I can to help out until in in elections, I I have no idea how that's gonna, that's the primary in September.
Yes.
All those early ballots have got to go out by the end of July. I'm sure the state, so that should be coming pretty soon, but I don't know, because I don't know what emails were sent and what the state had, so, I mean, I know, like I said, I just feel bad. I was happy stepping down, I and I did say to Edna when I left, anytime you need me, and I did come up here a few times, and she said, no, you know, I want to figure this out myself, I can do it, and I think it was a little bit too much. I think it was, it's a lot.
It is, it is a lot, we've been saying that for years, it's getting worse.
It is.
And everything's, it's changing continuously.
And that's why, like, I couldn't continue on, that's why, you know, I gave my notice
Right.
until, you know, September, December, because it, I just couldn't, I don't think anybody realized that I was constantly on my phone answering my emails, I went on vacation in October, the state is calling me, and I had to, like, there was no break, there was just no but I did it, because that's what you do, but right now, like I said, I'm willing to help out, just to see if we can get this somewhat back on track a little bit for people, because I don't know you know, if anybody else is looking for any vital, I have no idea, for burial agent, if, you know, somebody passes in town, that usually goes to the burial agent, which is the town clerk or Board of Health, and then it goes to the the town clerk to get it certified, to get the, you know, that, that, you know, that stuff can't just sit.
No, can't, I agree.
You know, I did, Marybell had called, one of them was a marriage license, and I had suggested to her, because this is in kind of like, like, you gotta find somebody. You don't really have a clerk, but you have an assistant, and a marriage license is a vital record, so I would advise until we get a town clerk in that understands the process, not to do any marriage license. If there's an issue, if Karen did, she may not be here in six months, that state, I've seen it come back up to a year afterwards. So I think it's just smart, you can go to any city or town, then go to Barry, Rutland, the brick, they can go anywhere to get a marriage license, I just think to be on the safe side, not only fair to the town and Karen and whoever's coming in to just hold off and say, until we get a town clerk, we're not gonna issue any marriage license. You know, maybe put that on the website, I I'm sure people understand, I I I would understand a lot more than if my marriage license was marriage license wasn't done properly, and I had it come back to me from the state, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a good thing. But I don't even know where to go from here to try to help out, because there's no the only thing I can do is come in maybe Friday and see, call the state and see what they're willing to do to at least get on that state computer. I did figure out how to get under vitals for right now, but that's a temporary. Of course, that's all changed, the whole screen has changed since I've even left, so you know, and figure out, I don't even know how, I don't know, did Karen get the phone messages? She didn't know the code, we tried, and so unless she's there to answer the phone, there's all those messages that I do know over the email, she should be able to see, but I don't know what access she has to the email. Yeah, I I don't know nothing, and I I don't think she I think she's just trying to keep her head up a little bit with the stuff that she has to, that she knows how to, how to do.
I know she doesn't have some of the passwords, and she doesn't want to change them, she doesn't want to put her name into it, because she feels that she's not the full-time clerk.
But being assistant, and she's been appointed that, she most certainly, she can, this is what other, you know, I mean, Paxton has, this is, a lot of towns now have an assistant town clerk. I don't know, like I said, with the state, if they have to have their own, or they can share that, I I don't know, but you know, it it's, I was, I was just beside myself when I went home, and I'm like, all right, I didn't want to do this, but I I will help out, because it's just not right. I care about the town too much.
We appreciate your willingness to step up and help out, because we know we need the help desperately. And we are remiss in a lot of the paperwork that comes through your office. So I think we would be remiss in not entertaining her volunteerism.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's not like we've had too many inquiries to the physician.
We've had none.
You've had, really?
We've had none.
One, just cut one. I think there was one, but no experience, right, exactly, yes.
And that's okay if they don't have any experience, what you need is to find someone who's willing to, or can micro, I mean, what's the word for it, like?
Mentor them? Mentor them?
Yeah, just be able to
Multitask.
Multitask, exactly, thank you, you really, you really do, you, it's not just like you can't stay focused, because there's a lot going on, and when you're only in the office for a short period of time, and I mean, that people say that, well, you were only out there for five hours a week. No, I wasn't up here five hours a week, I was up here all the time, just people didn't know that, or I was, my office wasn't open because I had to get other things done, I didn't have anybody you know, that I could, you know, help me out, just basic filing, there's a lot of filing in that, that.
Yeah. It's just a state offer training, just for a person who's brand new, just to get them.
They should be able to.
Yeah.
Um, my sister-in-law said that Hubbardston just, they they've gone through a few town clerks, just hired a town clerk, she's very green. But her mother, many, many, many years ago, was the town clerk for Hubbardston, so I'm sure she'll be, but there again, that was, I mean, things have changed, and I've only been gone for six months.
Right, right.
It's something you have to stay on top of, but anybody's trainable, there's other town clerks that, like with Edna, she would call New Braintree, or
Berry.
Or Berry, Ellen's very good, I mean, Ellen's been in
A long time.
A very, very long time, she does election stuff, so yeah, you just gotta know the basics, so we had to go and get what information, so.
The resources are out there, but if you don't know who they are, and which one are more helpful, then it is difficult.
Yeah.
Maybe the D L S rep would now at least have basic training to take. With the board?
We need to make a temporary appointment to allow.
Absolutely.
Still. I'll make a motion to point Christine Marderosian temporary town clerk to assist.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the board has voted to accept Christine Marderosian as a temporary town clerk, and hopefully we will be getting one in the future, but we are very thankful that she is willing to do this for the town.
Now, would I be compensated hourly? Okay. Um, like, I have no keys, so I will try, like, you know, I have, try to help my mother, my daughter's Saturday, like, I have a lot on my plate right now. I I can come up Friday during Karen's, to at least, because Marybell's not here to get in. And that's fine, just to talk to Karen, and I gotta see what she's willing or feels comfortable to do, even if it's just filing and just getting, I I walked in to look into a vital book, thinking, all right, I'll just photocopy this death certificate, it was on the wrong paper, first of all, so when you photocopied it, it said void.
It did, yes.
Yes, not wrong paper, that was not even, but, you know, the book was on the safe floor. What is a vital book doing on the state floor, on the, you know, on the floor of the safe, you know, so even maybe if I can have her just start putting things back where they should be, I I don't know, like I said, it's beyond me why a vital book would be on the floor of the safe. I don't know. She didn't seem to know, so I don't, I don't know. But I, if somebody wants to let her know, I can, I'll come up on Friday, she hit ten or nine thirty, I know she's gonna leave by eleven thirty.
Right, she does.
And I can probably stay a little late, you know, the biggest thing is to get into that state computer, figure out the phone system, I have no, where do we go? You know, I don't know, I, when I was talking to Marybell, and Karen, I guess somebody left a a code or a number, and it said for the phone, so we tried it, and it it's still I I don't know who you would call, or we have to wait till Edna gets back to log us back into the phone, I don't know. But all all I know is there's notes everywhere with with numbers, so we can't have, we can't have that.
No, no, definitely not. Okay, then you've been appointed, and we appreciate your willingness to come back. And hopefully with Karen's help, you'd be able to get things straightened out for her. Be a little, she's not really comfortable, and I think that would help a lot for her.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, she's, she's really she got thrown in with the elections, which is, that's very overwhelming. That's a full-time job in itself, and she's only here a few hours a week, and then when Edna left, I mean, she was basically, I don't know what the dynamic was, but probably just ended saying, oh, you know, you can do this, and you can do that, and she kind of followed Edna's lead.
Yes.
Now um, she hasn't had anybody, so she doesn't know except for very, like, the report for town, you know, town meeting.
Right, right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Chris, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome, and so what should I put in, like, I have no idea, did you change your pay thing too, for how you do things? Is that different or the same? I've been out of the loop now for six months, so.
The same form.
It's the same form?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of what Edna got paid. She was hourly.
Twenty five.
Was that?
It's twenty five.
Okay. She's experienced, though.
She's very experienced.
Do you remember what your rate was?
Depending on the week.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, seriously, I don't know, because I got just paid a
My salary.
Salary, right, so I just worked until every week was different, depending on how many hours I put in, so I never looked at it, at it that way.
Yeah.
Thirty five.
Thirty five.
Minimum.
Yes. Yeah, that's fine.
And are you gonna advertise too for the job again, or?
An ad has gone out.
Okay.
It has, yes. You have any suggestion for hourly rate?
It needs to be enough. Christine's gonna say.
I agree, I agree.
No, I mean, I'm here to help, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of money that goes out pretty soon too, like, that's gonna have to be discussed to get, to have help just to get those ballots out, I mean, like I said, I work a full-time job, and then I have other commitments. It's not like I can Um, just take a day off of work to do ballots, you know, I know Sherry Bergen's been wonderful. Um, there's been people, you know, maybe, and then hopefully maybe can come back, cuz she was very good at. The elections, well, she's ran many, so maybe, hopefully we get her to come back and at least. It, it's gonna take a team effort until we get somebody in here.
Hmm.
Right.
Sure.
I helped out with Karen at the last election. Getting out the paperwork and like that, I can do that again.
Okay.
I kind of have a general feel how it was handled.
I think Edna said she, they, um. Sent out almost two hundred ballots. So all that has to be entered into the computer. Stuffed. Then, you know, within the mail, and when it comes back, it has to be opened, make sure everything's done correctly, and then, and to back into the computer, so this is, it's. It's quite a process and it takes time. Cuz it has to go back into the computer, so people can go out, go online. To make sure that their ballot was sent out, and that their ballot was received and it was accepted and not rejected.
If you could do the c- computer part, I'm sure there's several of us that can do the paper part, and folding and stuffing envelopes, because it's not just one envelope, they have to stuff, it's more than one.
Well, the state is pretty good with the primary. Um. In the regular election, they usually send pre, already. Like somewhat stuff, so it's not like a four-step process, it's a two-step process. So they're pretty good with that. But it's still time, it's still very time.
Yeah, it is.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if anybody has one.
I know, hey.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we pay her thirty-five dollars a dollar.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And, um, while I'm thinking of it, and it's the board. With elections and some, you know, uh, hopefully somebody like Mary Bell or you, or like, can be here. To accept the ballots. And I'm just saying, I give permission, like, they, when they're ready to deliver, they deliver, there's not. Any deviation from that, they, and then they'll stick the note on, and, and they only give you so many chances, and then they go back.
Right.
Okay.
So if they come in just. Oh, you know, Mary Bell, or when you, like, just stick it into the office, that way they're. Um, it's accepted, cuz usually they want you to sign for, just that somebody's receiving it, or they at least want it in a building, and not outside.
Right.
Right, okay.
When, when do you think those would be coming?
I'd say by mid-July, I mean, the primary is, what, the first Tuesday in September?
Yeah.
So these have to be out probably at least a month prior to people. Um, and the state will call on that too, they will, they monitor everything in that state computer, so they'll know exactly how many we send out, how many we get back. Um. Yeah, because I was in Alaska two years ago, and they kept calling and emailing me, I'm in Alaska, and they called, like, you need to get these, and I'm like. I didn't have the ballots before I left, I'm gone, there's nothing I can do about, they got out in time and everything was fine, but they, they watch everything to make sure. Uh, which they should, I mean.
Oh, absolutely.
Thing.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Alright, so, um, what time is Karen in, at ten, nine-thirty?
She's usually be here by nine-thirty.
Okay. Alright. I'll be up then.
Okay, if I can help out, let me know, cuz I'll be around at that time also.
Yeah, the biggest thing is, I gotta figure out how, uh, to get into the phone system. Um, now, is there one email? I thought Mary Bell said now there's one town clerk.
I think it's town clerk at home cam.
Okay. Does Karen have access to that, because I think there's a code to that too?
That I can't guarantee, I'm not sure, I know they were trying to get a lot of the codes. When Edna was here, but I know they didn't get all of them.
Alright. Um, yeah, if you're around Friday, maybe just if I have, like, questions to help with Karen, to, like, the email, like, I have nothing right now, so. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's fine. You need anything, let me know.
Alright.
From CM Geeks can help with the email.
That's true. We can, we could work with the IT department too, to get some of those passwords.
The email password.
And the emails.
Yeah.
They'll be able to help out a lot with that.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, very good, but thank you again for.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Stopping up. Okay, um, line item transfers. Um, tax title exemption, treasurer collect salary. Two thousand dollars from the treasurer's. Collection salary. Treasurer foreclosure. Payroll service. Five hundred dollars. Treasurer foreclosure, debt interest, interest is one hundred fourteen dollars. To be transferred. From the accountant. Annual report printing. Transferred to the. Board of Selectmen admin salary. The amount is five hundred thirteen dollars. Town hall office supplies. Board admin salary, four thousand three hundred dollars. Transfer to the Board of Selectmen admin salary, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. From the. Hostage. Town hall electricity. Four hundred forty-five dollars. From the town hall repair and maintenance to the town hall electricity, one thousand dollars. From the building zoning office expenses to the town hall electricity, three hundred forty-five dollars. From the building zoning telephone. To the town hall electricity, hundred fifty dollars. And building zoning and education. To the town hall electricity, three hundred dollars transferred. And then we also have the ones from the police department. Full-time wages. Transferred to part-time wages, one thousand two hundred dollars. Chief wage. From part-time wages, three thousand two hundred dollars. Police training expenses. Transferred to part-time wages. Seven thousand three hundred dollars. Police training, from police training to the dog officer expense account, forty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Yeah, I have that one. For the gasoline, two thousand seventeen dollars and seven cents. Is that?
That was. Said not.
That was the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Transfer requests. For the administration, um, Board of Selectmen admin wages deficient was two hundred forty-three dollars. Warrant twenty-four, twenty-five. The deficient was, or, amount was two thousand forty-four dollars and fifty cents. The one from twenty-four, twenty-six. Was two thousand three hundred five dollars in warrant. For twenty-four, twenty-seven, which is a split warrant, one thousand forty-four dollars for a total of. Five thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And I have a note here saying it's okay to transfer from the building inspector budget to the town hall electricity. If needed, and the Board of Selectmen are good with it. Any questions or suggestions from the members? Anything that should not be considered?
Oh, we expected.
It is.
Last July.
It is. Alright, we have all the copies that need to be signed, and they need to have all three board members sign them. And from here, they will go to the town accountant. And, well, actually, it goes to finance committee, I think, next, and then to town accountant. We didn't make a specific motion to sign them, if one of them would, if one of you would like to make the motion, since they were already signed.
I'm making a motion to sign the. Your inline item transfers is read by the chair.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is Wendy? Going to be on Zoom tonight, I don't think she was gonna be here, but she thought she might be on Zoom.
Uh-huh.
And I got back this morning, I didn't see any note about whether she was going to be on it or not, I just have. I noticed that's here.
It's six total, right, moving.
Yes. Thank you. The notice that I have is the update to the Harper's time and attendance. She says, I have not completed the dual processing of the payroll and the training of the staff on the software. My priority has been working on receipts and reconciliations of taxes and year-ends. I do not have, I do have some questions that I need answered before the final rollout of the time and attendance. The list of employees that will use this has been reduced to fifteen to twenty. And I'm not sure that this will be cost-effective and save work time for myself and for the employees. Also, the vacation and sick time can be added to track this in Harper's already, and no additional cost. So if that's the goal, we have the capability, thank you, Wendy Graves, treasurer collector. You have a copy, yes.
I do. The goal is to keep accurate records. We can do that.
That's what she said.
Software we have.
Right.
We don't need to do the. On this.
I agree.
Do need is those paper sheets they turn in.
Uh-huh.
We need to standardize those, everybody.
I agree, that would be a good help.
And I think if we ask the accountant. Put together a spreadsheet.
Should be able to do it.
Department can use.
Yeah.
Simple.
Make it consistent, that would be fine.
Everybody that we.
Right.
Everybody's doing the same thing.
I agree.
Right now, we're not putting the. Or are we, the vacation and the sick time on the. Paste up.
So you're, just like you go through a feature. Piece of paper, anything.
But it should. Have a, a running total, plus and minus.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. That's it, and we're gonna try to do that, and make it work.
Um. They should have. What they have left.
Right, they should.
Or what they, yeah.
Yes.
They're, they don't, what they've spent.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they're always asking, what, what I got?
We are. Cuz we always get it in the email, but then we have to figure it out.
Yeah, and then you gotta go through.
Yeah.
More time, the admin's gotta research.
Okay. So, we wanna tell Wendy then we'll keep it as is for now?
Yeah.
Yes, what she's recommending.
Yeah, the tracking system that she has. Already, she can use for the vacation and sick time.
Right.
And will, and hold the account and for the other stuff.
Yeah.
Sounds good, okay. Council on Aging Appointments. Barbara?
I thought you had a list of.
I do not have it.
You do not have?
It was not in my packet.
I sent, um, the list to Mary Bell, and it would include Susan Madamski. Uh, Rebecca Austin. And I'm not sure, Kathy Corcoran, I'm, I'm not sure who was actually appointed when, because some were added during the year. So I'm not quite sure whose appointments are where. But I did send the list, I could probably find it, but. Um.
There a folder on the desk?
Hmm.
You think there's a folder on the desk? No.
I thought she would have given it to me if she had it.
Cuz I thought she said she had, maybe I would run down there and look.
Cuz she was going, she was waiting, the last I had heard, she was waiting for the paperwork to be signed by all of them. And filled out, and I don't have any of that here.
And, I don't know exactly what paperwork she was looking for.
It's an application to become a volunteer.
Application, I have applications for Susan and for Becky Austin.
Okay.
Um. I do not have the volunteer. Piece. Um, I don't believe you've signed the volunteer thing yet, uh, Becky has. And I believe Kathy Corcoran has, but I don't know if we actually had those applications to begin, they accepted. The idea of coming on the board.
Uh-huh.
Without us actually having the application in hand.
Okay.
So. Oh, and Erin. Erin, uh, Erin already mailed it, or emailed.
He mailed his in, and again, I don't have a copy of that, it wasn't given to our packet tonight. But I heard that he did send it in.
Yes, he did.
And I hadn't heard from Kathy, I hadn't heard anything from her.
Kathy Corcoran?
Yes.
Yeah, she's been acting as a COA volunteer for quite some time.
Right, she has.
Um. And, again. I believe she filled out the volunteer piece, but again, I didn't know about the application part.
Yeah, yeah.
So. I can make sure that I have all of those. Um, do you require those before they can be appointed, so that we can get started at our next meeting, or not? I mean, most of them have been working with us for quite some time.
Right, right.
Already.
Well, we know Erin is all set.
Right.
So Sue and Becky should be.
I have hers.
Enough.
I didn't bring them tonight because I didn't know that was necessary. And Becky's I have. Already.
So Kathy would be the only one really in question.
And I'm not sure if there isn't one downstairs for Kathy.
Okay.
No.
There's nothing.
You know, while, while we're talking about the council on aging. Um. I'm hearing about filing needed and all of that, have you ever considered seniors' tax credits? Uh, for volunteers in town?
I had asked for many years and was turned down for many years. Because it takes money away from the town, that's what the other boards kept saying.
Tax credit, I think we have to adopt the law.
Yes.
To do that.
Yes.
And I'm. I'm pretty sure the assessors were gonna bring that up. In the fall.
Okay. It just seems like there's so much work to be done around here, and we've seen a lot of work to be done that it might make sense. might make sense to give some incentive to seniors.
I know the assessors are going to address the seniors next year, they did the veterans this year. They're going to work on the seniors next year, I had requested that a few months ago.
In what capacity?
That's what they're going to decide as to how they're going to do it and what they are able to do.
For the tax credit thing?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I, when you said they're going to assess the seniors, I didn't know in what capacity they were.
Yes, no, in, in a positive sense, yes. But they, they did say that when they finished with the veterans, they would start with that. So I was happy to hear that from them.
Because there is a lot to be accomplished.
Oh, yes. I have her email with the names.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, all right, good, thank you.
You can find it faster than I can.
So you've got Becky Austin.
Yeah.
Kathy Corcoran.
Yeah.
Susan.
Madansky.
Madansky, and Erin Langbois.
Yes.
One-year appointments.
Yes.
That's what you want.
Well, Erin wants a one-year appointment, I, I'm not sure how to handle the rest.
Oh, okay.
They get appointed for one year because they didn't get appointed the same night as all the other appointments were made.
That's the list.
Yeah. These will have to be added, so they will be one-year appointments. And if they stay on an extra year, then there'll be two years next year, three years the year after. Three years ends your term, then you start over again, starting one, two, three. You were at the end of your term. So you were continued on.
I thought we were going to be staggered, so that one-third of us would be off each year. It sounds like it's not going to work out that way.
It, it didn't quite work out that way, but now that you get more people, it, it could work out more evenly. I agree, it's not as even as it could be. But with more people coming on, then yes, it could easily be evened off.
So what's the total going to be?
Total number.
Yeah.
On the COA?
Yeah.
Seven, I believe.
Seven.
Seven. Because we did three in June, earlier in June, and then we've got four to do now.
You could stagger these four right now and get it going.
We could, we could. I'll take a recommendation from the board.
Two, one for three, one for four. You know, just read the names again.
We know that Erin, for sure, only wants one year.
Erin wants one year.
Yeah.
So, big emotion that Erin gets appointed for one year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Susan and Kathy, two years.
We can do that.
And Becky Austin, three years.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
That was.
That was the motion? Just.
And that was the second.
Did you second it for sure? All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You almost have a full board, you can take two more.
Actually, our new bylaws say we can have, what, 11?
They usually says nine, but.
Is there, Rick had a request that we have new bylaws that we have established and voted on. Is there, I know that you asked that the select would be given a copy of our bylaws.
Yeah.
And what will happen then? You just keep them in a file, or do you want to discuss our bylaws with us, and when would that be?
I think if we had questions, we'd reach out to you.
Okay.
Then you can explain. It's submitted to bylaws to Maribel, so when she gets back, she'll.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
No, that'll be fine.
Anything else?
Okay, I have. Does anybody have any new business? Michael?
Yeah, Maribel had said that she got a response back from Spectrum on Stone Road. And it sounds like they're looking to wiggle out of their contract. So I guess the only thing I can, at this point, before they send us a bill for another $96,000, we should probably have, let's sit down with town council as to how to hold their feet to the fire.
Exactly, yeah.
Or not pay them what they think they're going to get.
Right.
Because from what they're saying, they're wetlands conservation, blah, 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 blah. It would seem that they would have done their due diligence before they even signed the agreement, knowing that that's what the committee here in town, the cable committee, had put forth. So it would have all been part of general discussion, and they agreed to it, so.
And if we wanted to make changes now and that we couldn't, they wouldn't allow us to.
Correct.
So.
So I don't think it's coming, the email response to, I mean, from anybody in Spectrum Charter legal, I think it was just somebody who doesn't want to.
Could forward this to Jared and have him respond directly to Spectrum.
Yeah, because, I mean, Bernice Stone was here, and her plans are to build a house up there, so they were citing the condition of the old house, but that's really immaterial.
Right.
They can go to the brand-new pole that National Grid put in up there.
Yes.
And the Hugheses still live up there.
Yeah.
So, and they had expressed to Bernice Stone that they were very interested in having it hooked up, so even if it's just one, that's the contract.
Yeah.
So.
They just feel they couldn't connect it to a condemned house.
But they didn't mention the other house that isn't, you know, the Hugheses.
Yeah.
They didn't even mention that.
No, no, they looked that up.
Maribel, so.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, that's, I don't think they're being upfront with their response to Maribel. Yeah, it's a chore going up through the woods, but they got to bring power up there.
It goes uphill, wetlands are usually downhill.
Downhill, yeah.
And as far as I know, there aren't that many wetlands in that area. If that's, a lot of it's mass wildlife, and then the rest are hayfields. There's not that much wetland that they would have to be concerned with. If they were concerned with it, they could send me or one of the other conservation numbers up there to check it out for them, but they haven't asked.
No.
They didn't ask at all about it. They just said it's too, too many there, but exactly where? I have no idea. It was never asked.
I mean, either way, at some point, that whole, that whole circuit's going to have to be, you know, all new poles, you know, going up through the woods, or they're going to have to approach the town to actually go up Stone Road and go up that way. You know, but National Grid's not going to do that until, I mean, I wouldn't think so.
Rising beats them.
Well, one or the other, but you know, it's easier, it's a shorter distance up through the woods.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Because when they put power in, I remember Hank telling me that he wanted it to go up the road. You know, and his father wanted it to go up. And they were like, well, it's a straight shot from Rutherford Road, it's only X number of poles versus double or triple that amount of poles.
Exactly.
So only now it's all grown up, it's not.
Okay, well, we can question them on it, we can get town council on it to look at it and see if we can save some money, that would be lovely, too.
Yeah, I mean, just to see what, make sure we're holding on the high ground on it.
Yes.
As far as the contract.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we don't, conceivably, there could be more than one new house up there, you know, we don't know.
Oh, we know some year is going to be a lot more than one new house up there.
There'll be something, yeah, whether it's, I mean, they may need three-phase power up there at some point.
They will, I can almost guarantee it. Anything else for new business?
No.
Does anyone have any old business?
I guess that fell into old business, but.
Okay. And you're, we're all set with the police detail now for the tree cutting at the cemetery. They're working it out with Fred.
Oh.
So.
I didn't know what the end result was.
It was, it was like $46 short. He says he will, it'll get done.
You'll find that.
Yeah, I don't, Matt talked to Fred, and Fred just said, "Put it in for the, the 32 hours."
Yeah.
And he would fix the rest of it for, because somebody left early, whatever.
Oh, okay.
So he said it's going to be.
One left early and two stayed late, so they have to.
Right.
They have to balance it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People are very much surprised when they drive by the cemetery now and look at it, it's, it's wide open, but it looks good. They did an excellent job. Correspondents. Just something very short. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you for reappointing KP Law to the position of Town Council on behalf of KP Law. I would first like to express our appreciation to the Board of Selectmen, Administrative Assistant and Town Employees for the privilege of having served the town as Town Council. As you know, we are committed to the service of municipalities with unparalleled dedication to efficient and cost-effective personalized service. With KP Law, you are supported by a team of the highest quality lawyers with specific expertise in the matters that the town faces, with the value added by our record of over four decades of success on behalf of our municipal clients. We appreciate the opportunity to continue serving as your Town Council. Please contact me anytime with any further questions. Then she wrote down below, "Thank you so much," from Lauren. That was the only thing that we received in the mail today. Any other issues to be taken up? We're all set, all entertain a motion to adjourn. We're going to adjourn this one and come back to it after executive session, correct?
No, we're going to go right into executive session.
Okay.
And not to come back into open session.
Not come back in, all right. Okay, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session and not return to open session.
I move that we go to executive session under Chapter 39, Section 23B, Subsection 3.
Get the hot seat.
Contract negotiations, non-union personnel.
All in favor? Don? Michael?
No.
Aye.
B?
Aye.
Oh, mute that. Oh, mute the hat.